Let the record show, we are reconvening with all members present except for Rob Cattinello, I think is standing in the hallway. Due to the large turnout and the fact that we haven't even gotten close to seating the people out in the hallway, and obviously that is not a safe situation nor respectful situation, we are going to adjourn the meeting until 8:30. We're going to move across the street to the church, which has been prepared as a backup for this meeting. So we'll give everyone time to get across the street and we will start at 8:30.
And that's Presbyterian Church of Madison, if you walk down the hall.
So Presbyterian Church, there is a handicap accessibility around the back, so if you need that handicap accessibility, go around and park.
Are we going to?
But the record reflect, we are reconvened across the street with all members present. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Before we get to minutes for approval, again, I want to thank people for taking the time to come across the street, and since this is not where we normally meet, obviously, a little reminder, one exit, just the way you came in back there, alternate exits on each wing, in case we have to get out quickly. All right. Didn't mean to have anything read into that, but do I have a motion to accept the minutes of, executive committee minutes of January 23rd, 2012?
Mayor, I move that?
Second. Discussion, roll call.
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Here?
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Yeah.
Mr. Cattinello?
Aye.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
And we are having, getting used to our microphones here, so if you have difficulty hearing, anyone raise your hand and we'll try to do a little bit better with the microphones. Again, greetings to the public, want to cover a few things. Find my notes as we came across the street. One that was not on the list, and we probably should have done a better job of recognizing it, but today, this very day, is a hundredth birthday for Girl Scouts of America, so we should recognize that, the training volunteers. And I also want to recognize the employee for the month of March, Stacy Dooley, of the purchasing department, for the additional work she has performed outside the normal scope of responsibility in the absence of purchasing and personnel officer. And I'll be making some more comments under number 10 of the, on the agenda, so we'll hold off on that. And at this point, I'd like a motion to approve resolution R. 86-2012. Actually, can we have the police officers up here, including Vincent Delavalle? Please come up, and a motion to approve that resolution.
Mayor, I move resolution 86-2012.
A second?
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, Mayor. Based on the reports and statistics from the police and fire departments on incidents involving alcohol, drugs, gangs, sexual and other assaults, burglary, theft, fire, and alarm tempering, we are very concerned about public safety in general. We are concerned about the safety of our first responders, service availability, and reduction of response time to our residents, the potential increase of serious crimes and drugs, alcohol, and gangs in our schools and neighborhood. As discussed during the budget meeting, the police department has reduced the number of sworn officers from 35 in 2008 to 26 with four civilian dispatchers today. This resolution is to backfill the vacancy created by the retirement last October of our school resource officer, Wayne Reed. With this new officer, we will have a total of 27 officers. As part of the budget discussion, we look to hire another police officer in the near future, based on the chief's recommendation, to reestablish the alcohol and narcotic task force to provide more flexible coverage and greater focus in much-needed areas. Thank you, Mayor.
Any further discussion? Roll call, vote please.
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Yeah.
Mr. Cattinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Vincent Delavalle.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and partially and justly?
That I will faithfully, partially, and justly.
Perform all the duties of?
Perform all the duties of?
Probationary, probationary police officer of the borough of Madison?
Probationary police officer of the borough of Madison.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability.
I further solemnly swear?
I further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey?
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith?
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same?
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States?
To the governments established in the United States.
And in this state?
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Now it's official. I will abbreviate this proclamation, but a couple of key things we want people to Very good. Thank you. We look forward to seeing you serve Madison. understand, that each year, more than 2 million potential poisonings are reported to national poison centers. Approximately half of all intentional poisonings occur each year happen to children under the age of six. Unintentional poisoning is the second-leading cause of unintentional injury death nationally. That there is a hotline that citizens can call for help, 1-800-222-1222. That's 800, three twos, one followed by three twos, for poison help hotline help. And we should all keep our, anything potentially poisonous, secure away from children to avoid the accident in the first place. Child resistant packaging is successful in reducing unintentional poisoning, but it is not childproof. And every poisoning is preventable, so therefore, I, Robert H. Conley, Mayor of the Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body, to hereby proclaim the week of March 18th through the 24th, 2012, as National Poison Prevention Week in New Jersey, and encourage all citizens to pledge their commitment to ensuring the safety of themselves, their families, and their communities. Thank you. All right, next on the agenda was listed the budget introduction. That budget will not be, the budget will not be introduced tonight. We will schedule a special budget hearing between now and our next council meeting, which is March 26th, with the goal of introducing the budget on the 26th. Also, the following ordinance or resolutions will be tabled, and I will ask for a motion to table these. Resolution 87, which was the introduction of the 2012 budget. Resolution 89, which is a resolution ratifying the termination of Raymond Cody. Resolution 91, which was a resolution appointing James E. Burnett to the position of Borough Administrator. And Resolution 93, which was the self-examination of the budget. Also, the following ordinances will not be introduced tonight. Clarifying, David Evans, we're, okay, we will, okay, we will proceed with ordinance 1, 2012, which is appropriation limits to establish cap banks, so that will be introduced tonight. But the following ordinances will not be introduced, which is ordinance 2, 2012, which was to modify ordinance 5, 2008, adjusting salary range for the Borough Administrator. Also, ordinance 3, 2012, will not be introduced tonight, which is the ordinance abolishing the position of Assistant Borough Administrator.
Mayor, I move to table Resolution 87, 89, 91, and 93, 2012.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Discussion. Say none, roll call, vote.
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Yeah.
Mr. Cattinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to reports from committees. Thank you, Dave. Actually, we have the, so we don't lose it, we have the cap ordinance listed here to be introduced at this point, so I have a motion to introduce ordinance 1-2012. Actually, we read our statement on that. Actually, it's listed later on, too, so we will, we'll stay with the scorecard. It's confusing enough for me tonight. With that, we will go to reports from committees, public safety. Ms. Tsukamoto?
Yes, Mayor, before we start with the reports, Joe was going to make a comment.
Thank you, Joe.
Try to get this microphone close to me.
That works.
That's working good. Can, can everyone hear me?
Yep.
All right, I'll try to talk loud. This is just an explanation to the public of the, what transpired last meeting, from my point of view, regarding Mr. Cody. Ray Cody received a Rice notice two weeks prior to the last meeting. He was advised his position was, one, being considered for consolidation. On the night of the meeting, he was advised in executive session that his position was at risk of being eliminated by council that night. Mayor Conley so advised him. It was made clear that it was for budgetary purposes to eliminate duplicative positions and save money to minimize tax increase was necessary. An advice at council, the council members were told not to speak about it, so as not to cause any prejudice to Ray Cody, Ms. Tsukamoto was advised to just read the resolution without comment. The statute gives two-thirds of the governing body the right to remove the administrator and must be done at a public meeting. Council cannot act in private. That's my statement, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Now, report public safety.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me? I'll move it back when I'm done, okay? Thank you. Can you hear me now? Okay, great, thank you. To follow what Joe just said, I would like to make a statement here. I want to let everybody know that I volunteer to work for the taxpayers, and I believe that the budget is the most important part of our responsibility as a council person. As you all know, it's very difficult to handle consolidations in the private sector, but it's even more difficult in the public sector, just like Joe just told you, where you have to carry out these actions in public. It was particularly difficult and uncomfortable for me, having worked closely with Mr. Cody over the past four years. Please believe me when I say that I have agonized over this more than anyone can imagine. I strongly believe in the caring, sensitive, and compassionate Madison way. This is why many of us, me included, are drawn to volunteer our time and are so proud to call Madison home. I totally agree with the criticism that my motion at the last council meeting was carried out in an emotionless manner. Prior to the meeting, I was told by the Borough Attorney, Mr. Mazaka, that there wasn't a gentler and less public way to merge the positions. I tried to lessen the anguish by suggesting, through Mr. Burnett, that Mr. Cody could excuse himself from the proceeding. Mr. Cody declined, and I still wish that there was another way. I would like all of you to know that I hear your feedback, and I will continue to listen to all the suggestions, and I thank you so much, all of you, for being here this evening. Now, moving on to the public safety reports. I attended a ceremony of the fire department to dedicate a plaque to honor former fire chief, James McCormack, last Sunday. James was the chief from 1975 to 1985. He passed away in 2008. It was a very warm and moving celebration in his memory. Seven firefighters completed a 16-hour road rescue course the past weekend in Pennsylvania. This course is a prerequisite for a confined space rescue class that the police department will be conducting the coming April. Also, want to let you know that the annual Project Community Pride Breakfast is scheduled for Friday, March 30th, at 8:30 a.m. at the Madison Hotel. Please come support this very important organization for our community, and also come meet our new president, Lieutenant Jerry Mentone. That's my report, thank you.
Thank you. Utilities? Dr. Esposito?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, there's no report for this evening.
Public Works Engineering? Mr. Links?
Hi, damn sorry. The first thing I'd like to, for everyone to know, is the MRC actually opened up, that's why it's me, for all the kids out down there, really nice, and if you haven't gone there, please do so. It's amazing, and one parent says, this is a special place. DPW, the rubbish waste will be started to be picked up on the 12th, and will be up this month and run through the summer. I have a bunch of other things I can talk about, however, I would make no comments tonight about how I feel over the last two weeks. I'm going to save that for the budget meeting that hopefully you all come to. But, to ins, excuse me, to insinuate that I have ever made decisions politically on borough business, for lack of a better term, is BS. I never have, I never will. Those of you who know me, from some of Houston, pretty much know I, well, always say what I think. I can care less of political ramifications. That's my statement, but more to come out when we have our budget meeting. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Finance and Borough Clerk, Mr. Cattinello?
Thank you, Mayor. In anticipation of the June 5th primary election, the filing deadline for nomination petitions for county committee member as well as municipal office is April 2nd, 2012. Forms are available in the clerk's office. I'll reserve any comment on the budget until it is introduced. Thank you, Mayor.
You. Community Affairs, Mr. Landrigan?
Thank you, Mayor. The Chamber of Commerce is holding its annual Easter Fun Fest event downtown on Saturday, March 31st, from 11:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. Children and their parents are being invited to stroll from store to store collecting eggs. Children will redeem their emptied eggs for chances to win prizes, including a bicycle, and three, at three tables staffed by chamber volunteers in front of Rose City Jewelers on the Waverly Place sidewalk. For the senior advisory committee, Madison High School is offering its annual dinner theater to the seniors on Wednesday, March 28th. A free dinner is served at 5:30 in the cafeteria, and the dress rehearsal performance of The Wizard of Oz begins at 6:30. This can attract several hundred seniors who enjoyed returning to the school, their children and grandchildren attended, while performers benefit from a tryout audience. The recreation committee is addressing two points right now. One is the use of the Bailey Ellard Fields, and two are background checks for coaches. I'll be reporting more on that as information comes available. And from the DDC, right now, their focus is on the farmers market, which will begin soon, they're looking at different options, including moving a portion of it or all of it over to where we have, over to Green Village Road, where we have the concerts, and that would probably, may happen in late August, early September. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Health, Ms. Vitale?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if I have to do it, yeah, thanks. Okay. I too had an announcement to make tonight, but I will hold that again for the budget because it actually pertained to a lot of what we spoke about as far as the budget is concerned. But I want to make one statement tonight, when I see all of you people here. We've all experienced a great deal of emotions these past couple weeks, but I want you all to remember, we're true Madisonians, that's all. And I still believe that we all have the same core values that this town has always had, and I would love for us to come together and show that spirit all over again. The rest of my comments will be a budget, but I do want to talk about a wonderful group that we have in our town, that's MASA. It's a, it's the Substance Abuse Committee. We also have a joint court now that has Madison, Chatham, Chatham Township, and Harding Township. And what MASA has done is that they have joined forces with the MASA groups and those particular municipalities, and they developed this wonderful packet of information that's going to be left at the joint court, and it's going to be pertinent information for all the citizens regarding substance abuse. And they worked very, very hard on this, and, you know, it's a wonderful group of people that get very little recognition, have hardly any money to spend, but they're always doing the best for the town. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Communications and petitions?
Yes, Mayor and council did receive several emails this week. We have an email, an email March 2nd from Joseph Belzerwak of Beach Avenue regarding Dr. Esposito, an email received March 5th from Antonette Pacolo Park Avenue regarding traffic concerns along Park Avenue, and the following residents sent in emails regarding the removal of Raymond Cody. Jacqueline Colcahone of Park Barnsdale, Ben and Lois Walkowitz of Dellwood Drive, Christine Hammond of Knollwood Avenue, and Jane Reynolds of Greenwood Avenue.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to the first of two invitations for discussion. As is the procedure with this first one, you may comment on anything on the work agenda. Note that the Madison 2020 Advisory Committee, we're going to push that back to our next council meeting, March 26th, and so it gets its due respect for time. We will also, we do have on the work agenda the DPW gas pump, and also Madison Artist Studio Tour, and also all the resolutions listed. We will also allow comment on the resolutions that have been tabled, since many people, I think, are here, that do want to comment on those. Before we get to the first comment period, I'm going to, I also had a prepared statement, it's going to be a lot shorter than I originally said, so we can be discussed properly during the budget process. But in, over 40 years, I started following Madison public, politics when I was fairly young, I have never seen an issue that has so struck a nerve in this town. It has sent a shockwave into neighboring towns, and it has really, as I said, struck a chord and has made people very emotional, as you saw here two weeks ago, and you saw again tonight. One of the common themes I have heard from every resident that has spoke up about this is the need to show respect. And so as we come up to speak, I want to remind everyone, whether you're here, at the podium, or in the audience, of that theme, the theme of respect, because that is what makes Madison great. I may have to cut people off for time, and that is to show respect to others. I may have to cut people short if you get a little fired up, and we understand that, but I may have to cut you short. I may also cut council members short, or myself, may have to be called on it, because we do not want to have a discussion. It is our time here for people to share their comments, it is a time for elected body to listen and take notes and act appropriately in the coming meetings. So with that, if you are interested in speaking on the resolutions that were listed, we're
We will also allow comment on the resolutions that have been tabled since many people, I think, are here that do want to comment on those. Before we get to the first comment period, I'm gonna, I also had a prepared statement. It's gonna be a lot shorter than I, um, originally said, so we can be discussed properly during the budget process. But in, in, over 40 years, I started following Madison public, politics when I was fairly young, I have never seen an issue that has so struck a nerve in this town. It has, uh, sent a shockwave into neighboring towns and it has really, as I said, struck a chord and has made people very emotional, as you saw here two weeks ago and you saw again tonight. One of the common themes I have heard from every resident that has spoke up about this is the need to show respect. And so as we come up to speak, I want to remind everyone, whether you're here, at the podium, or in the audience, of that theme, the theme of respect, because that is what makes Madison great. I may have to cut people off for time, and that is to show respect to others. I may have to cut people short if you get a little fired up, and we understand that, but I may have to cut you short. I may also cut council members short, or myself, may have to be called on it, because we do not want to have a discussion. It is our time here for people to share their comments. It is a time for elected body to listen and take notes and act appropriately in the coming meetings. So with that, if you are interested in speaking on the resolutions that were listed, whether they're currently listed or were listed at the beginning of the meeting, uh, or any of the work agenda items, step up to the microphone, state your name and address, and we will be holding you to three minutes. Certainly feel free to queue up so we can save time and not have to wait for people to step forward. Mr. Cersei Allen?
Yeah, we ought to have more meetings here. It's nice to be in, I love to be in the House of the Lord, you know, it's a good, good feeling, everybody's so serious, but, uh, Sam Cersei Allen, Park Avenue, Madison. Just a couple of questions I'd like to, maybe on the, the ordinance where, uh, Joe, you can help me on the, is there something about the Open Public Meeting Act, about more than four people getting together and sort of making decisions? Is there, could you, could you clear that Open Public Meeting Act or the sunshine law or something? Can you explain how it works?
Under the Open Public Meetings Act, meetings must be noticed.
Well, I mean, isn't there something about it, there's six council people, if four get together without talking to the other two or something, isn't there something against the law with that?
If, if, if a majority of the council meets without public notice, it violates the Open Public Meetings Act, yes.
Well, it seemed like at the last meeting, there was five people that knew, including you, and, you know, I, it was wrong what happened, and, and there's a way of doing things. What happened last, last meeting and while you mentioned respect, you know, to give respect, you gotta, that was very disrespectful, Mr. Cody and to the people. I mean, that's not Madison. And, uh, if four, if I, if, it's quite obvious, the way we interpret what happened is that the four years got together and, and, and the president would not have made the motion unless she, unless she had the four votes. I mean, that's the feeling everybody got, talking to a lot of people. I might be wrong, but that's the feeling I came across, and I, I don't think it's right. It's something that, that thing should have been talked about at executive meeting, and I wish we don't do things like that.
To my, to my knowledge, there was no get-together of the council.
Well, it was quite obvious, Joe, when, when Jeannie asked for, 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 you, you had the thing already within four seconds ago. You knew about this, right?
I was asked several days before the meeting by Ms. Sukamoto to be prepared to talk to the council. There was no meeting of the council, there was no discussion with the council until I talked in public.
Well, the, the, the point I'm getting at, it, it looked bad, and I wish we don't do stuff like that. Because Madison's a great town, been here all my life. Matter of fact, my birthday's tomorrow too, Bob. Also, uh-
How old do you want to be, Sam?
Pardon?
How old do you want to be?
I'm 71 tomorrow.
Congratulations.
I feel like 40. Also, can I ask a question, um, do you, can you correct us numbers as far as, you made the analogy that we're gonna save $200,000 next year, $100,000 this year. The way you came up with them numbers is that you said Jim Burnett makes 94 and Ray Cody makes 154, but on the 154, you added 30, 35% for the benefits, and that's where you come up with the 200,000. Does not the assistant administrator have to get paid benefits? So the bottom line is, them numbers don't make sense to me. I think it's like a, am I right?
So those, we'll, we'll make sure during the, um, as we get to the budget hearing, if, if this direction is continued, that we have that, those answers-
Yeah, but I mean, am I right for saying that? I just, it sounds good, $200,000, but it's not $200,000.
Yeah. I, I, I also want to be very clear that, um, as, uh, Sam's questions around the Public Meetings Act, he was commenting on perception and, and-
Right, yes, absolutely.
No, no knowledge of, of any, any, anything going on.
Right, right, right. That was the, that was the perception, right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hope you need a pencil, a pen here? Um, well, I came to speak specifically about the resolution, um-
Could you give your name for the record, please?
Oh, Pat Saris and Eight Pine Avenue.
Thank you.
Um, and now that it's been withdrawn, it sort of feels like, uh, and all of this discussion about respect, um, which is, um, which was sorely lacking, um, in the last meeting. I was not present, uh, at that last council meeting when the resolution was put forward, but I must tell you that I watched it on the video, and I was very disappointed with what I saw. I was an elected member to the Madison Board of Education, serving this town for 23 years, and I know a great deal about the responsibilities and the ethics of an elected official. Certain codes of conduct must be observed as an elected official while recognizing that the public expects as much disclosure of information as is legally allowed. Residents of this town expect and deserve a high level of communication from their elected officials. This did not happen at that meeting. What I saw when viewing the recent council meeting was an insult to the citizens of this town. It was clear to me that a great deal of strategizing and planning took place prior to this meeting. I don't have any questions for you, I'm just making a statement. While professing multiple times that this was not a performance issue, the removal or termination of Ray Cody, the two-thirds majority members were cloaking their true intent in budget rhetoric. There's a behavior pattern that I have seen in many personal relationships, in business interactions, and in political arenas. This is how it works. You keep repeating a position or a statement, and pretty soon, others will begin to accept it as true, whether it is or even if it's not. If you are an individual of integrity, you must not allow this type of behavior. When an elected board such as this one proposes resolutions that are not part of the official agenda and act without full disclosure to the public, it support, it strongly supports the notion that residents of this town ought to pay very close attention to the workings of this public entity. This council needs more accountability, more respect for the people they represent, and certainly more civility in their dealings with their employees. We need to demand that of our officials. Thank you very much. I, I do have a, an article on when civility matters, and I would like to share it with the council members. It's not a very big article, it's a very simple read, but I believe it's an important part of your dealings as public elected officials and our dealings as human beings.
Yeah, we'll give it to the clerk and we'll distribute it. And, um, just of clarification, the, um, resolutions have been tabled and not withdrawn at this point, but it will be reviewed during the, the budgeting process.
Okay. Um, Ostry Bailey, 54 East Lane. So point of clarification, Mayor, um, is Ray Cody right now our borough administrator?
Um, he, he will not be returning to work tomorrow, so the, the action of February 27th stands and has not been ratified by a, um, resolution, so a appeal process has, the time clock on that has not started, but with, uh, input from two attorneys, the 4-2 vote still stands at this point until either it is rescinded by a new vote or other action.
And will that take place at the special budget hearing?
Uh, would, not, not, probably not take place at the special budget hearing, but would take place at the introduction of the budget, which would be planned to be two weeks from today.
So since it hasn't been put into written form, he's still our borough administrator?
Yeah, there, um, on paper, he's still borough administrator. He, he will not be at work, the, uh, oh, yeah. Yeah, thank you.
Matty Akobi, Labor Council, he is the borough administrator until he receives a written resolution. He remains on the payroll and as an employee of the Borough of Madison, and before there can be any discussion of him at a subsequent meeting in closed session, he must receive what's known as a Rice notification, which is written notification to the employee that there'll be discussion about him in closed executive session, and the employee has the right to have that discussion take place in public.
Okay.
So in answer to your question, Mr. Cody remains an employee of the Borough of Madison as we sit here right now.
As the administrator. Thank you. Thank you. First off, I, I would like to say that I was on the search committee that selected Ray Cody. He was the most knowledgeable, most articulate person to be our borough administrator. In the five years he has served this borough, he has not let one person down. He has worked tirelessly for the taxpayers and residents of Madison. His many accomplishments include cost savings throughout the borough, bringing in revenues and grants, including new business to this town, shared services and millions of dollars of grant money. He's worked on six budgets to find savings, all the while maintaining our services. Ray is our chief negotiator in difficult contract negotiations with the borough unions. No one deserves to be treated this way. In all the years I served this borough, never during those years did I witness the lack of respect for procedure and for human dignity, as I witnessed on YouTube on February 27th of the meeting. It was clear to me that the mayor had been totally blindsided by the four council people. You know, why couldn't the mayor and council, this is what we used to do, sit down with Mr. Cody and discuss the budget considerations? That's the way you're supposed to do it, or was that really the issue? If we lose Ray Cody in this manner, it will be a very, very sad day for Madison. Now, Mayor, I also have a letter that you received from the Wolkowitzes. I was told I could read that into the, um, record.
We got a minute and a half or-
All right. Uh, basically, this letter from Lois and Ben Wolkowitz states that, um, they are opposed to the firing of Ray Cody, and, um, was there no other way to identify savings of $100,000 in a budget of over 20 million? Ray is adept at identifying sources for savings and could have assisted you in finding that level of savings without depriving Madison of its much-needed knowledge and skills. You have, the ending of the Wolkowitzes' letter is, "You have a chance to rectify your shameful treatment of a decent, hard-working, public servant by keeping Ray Cody the borough administrator." Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I'd like, I'd like to ask the audience to hold the applause and let each speaker come up, please.
Let's, uh, um, polite, short applause because the, the high emotions today are fine, but if we start getting to the point that there are anything negative, we'll have to cut everything, uh, any feedback from the audience. So if you keep it very polite and very short, and certainly no jeers from the audience. Thank you.
Okay. Lisa Ellis, 46 Britton Street, current, uh, president of the Madison Board of Education. Three minutes is not enough to express the enormity of my disappointment in your decision to dismiss Ray Cody. Those who know me well know that I can be a bit relentless when I feel strongly about something, and I've thought of almost nothing else since February 27th. You have treated Ray Cody and in turn Jim Burnett, two men of extraordinary talent, intelligence, and class, who have worked harder than any two people have, I have ever known, for a town they live in and love, with complete disregard and shocking disrespect. This action and the uproar that has followed have done immeasurable harm to our reputation, credibility, and ability to get things done. Madison does not do business in this way. We are better than this. You have repeatedly asked us to believe that this was a budgetary necessity, and though no one questions the financial difficulties you have faced over the last few years, this option was never discussed publicly at any of your budget meetings. It was not even placed on an agenda until tonight's. You have put forth absolutely no evidence that proves this to be the best, let alone only option, to balance your budget. This borough employs approximately 150 people. One-third of those employees make over $100,000. Where is the analysis that shows all of these positions have been thoroughly evaluated for efficacy and redundancy? Without that analysis, it appears that you have just cut the highest-paid employee without any regard for what that position entails, let alone any regard for the man who so ably and admirably filled that position for the last five years. Madison does not do business this way. Ray Cody and Jim Burnett have both worked ridiculous hours, accomplishing great things in their tenure. No one can say they are overpaid. That would be laughable. They have worked to improve the borough's relationship with the Board of Education, and Ray assumed a leadership role in the progress that has been made in the process for the sale of GVR. Ray's savvy and expertise were so important, and we have lost his participation at a crucial juncture in this process. The timing could not have been worse. When this body created the assistant borough administrator's job in August of 2010, you had my full and vocal support. It just made sense in light of the other positions that were being eliminated or restructured. Now, after less, less than 18 months, you want to consolidate the positions of two men who work minimally 50 hours a week, and you also want to diminish the stature of the borough administrator's job, from your highest-paid position to that of your 55th highest-paid position, effectively cutting the compensation for your CEO by over one-third. Yet you don't plan on changing the duties or responsibilities? Your expectation is that Jim Burnett should be able to handle 100 hours of work for the same rate of pay. Jim is Superman in my book. He will absolutely put in those 100 hours. He will be here working in the middle of the night, he will forget to eat, he will forego his family life, but that's okay. It must seem reasonable and fair to you. Madison does not do business this way. This was an affront to common decency and common sense. Every year when I address our graduating seniors, I almost always note that they will make mistakes over the course of their lives, but it is what they do in the aftermath that truly shapes their destiny. You have the power to admit this was a mistake and immediately correct it, or immediately, or minimally slow down and allow yourselves the time to do the detailed analysis that should have been done in the first place. We are better than this.
Thank you. Just a reminder, moving forward, as I'm trying to hold people, 30 minutes, want to give you time, obviously you can, three minutes, 30 minutes. Check and see if anyone's still paying attention, thank you. Oh, to three minutes, want to give you time, just please finish that thought as quickly as possible, and so we can get the next person up. Thank you.
Hi, Karen Sotac, Nine Oak Court. Good evening. First of all, I want to say that I respect each of you for dedicating yourselves to serve our town. I voted for each one of you at least once because I believe that you are capable of making difficult decisions regarding the best interest of all citizens. That being said, I was very disturbed after watching the last council meeting. I questioned the rationale of the decisions made by the council majority in the matter of Mr. Cody. I'm aware that many times decisions are made behind closed doors in executive session, especially regarding personnel matters, to protect employees' rights. The public may not discover the reason behind the decision until many years later, if at all. If Mr. Cody's dismissal had been due to a performance issue, then perhaps I could understand the reason behind the decision, but since council stated at the last meeting that decision had nothing to do with performance, and since it was also noted that Mr. Cody, together with Mr. Burnett, had saved the borough 1.4 million, I can hardly buy into the idea that the decision to re, release Mr. Cody and replace him with Mr. Burnett is based entirely on budgetary issues. There are too many inconsistencies that conflict with that premise. The first inconsistency lies in the fact that he offered to work for the 90 days and help with the transition, but he was told no. That is an insult to Mr. Cody, as well as the taxpayer who has the right to expect an orderly transition. Another inconsistency is that Mr. Cody was just reappointed as BA only a few months ago. Was the council not thinking about the budget back then? That certainly would have been a more appropriate time to take such an action, if need be, but again, I believe anyone who is going to save us 1.4 million is certainly worth keeping. In a cost-benefit analysis, we are still ahead by over- In a cost-benefit analysis, we are still ahead by over $1 million. And you claim you are consolidating positions for budgetary purposes. But then why did you create an assistant BA position just a few years ago and now claim the job is redundant? This also shows poor planning, in my opinion. I believe it was a wrongful move on the part of the council to dismiss Ray, but the way it was done and actually handled was even more disturbing. Honestly, I can accept the fact that you weren't able to reveal the entire story surrounding the events that led up to last week's vote, but please don't try and convince everyone that it's all about a budget and our AAA bond rating. Answer honestly, or tell us you're unable to comment. We elected you because we trusted that you would make the right decisions, even when they were difficult to make. Please respect the people you serve, along with all the town employees who serve us, and display some common sense and decency. I implore each of you to examine your conscience and remember your mission statement, to provide professional leadership by listening to the community and empowering employees to act effectively. And when you cast your vote, whenever that may be, please do the right thing for this town. Thank you.
Woody Kirkus Lager, 60 Prospect Street. I have three points I'd like to cover concerning the budget and personnel processes used and the decision made by the mayor and council at the last meeting. First, an attempt was made to take a personnel action under the guise of a required budget reduction procedure. It was mishandled, disrespectful, and generated many strong emotions because of the lack of civility in the process. Ultimately, it was not, in my opinion, consistent with recommended legal personnel practices. In my view, because of these faults, Ray Cody should still be the borough administrator. If the mayor and council treat Mr. Cody as a person, not a budget line item, they will see a highly skilled administrator who has been of extremely high value to Madison already. He's been here for a little over four years. I was mayor when he was hired. We spent over two months planning who would be the new administrator. A lot of time went into that, as Austria Bailey said. Even with the relatively short tenure, and they conclude there must be some way, there will be some other way to save $200,000 in the budget. The budget reduction was justified by a councilman's extensive references to discussions concerning Madison's AAA rating. The plea was that the mayor and council had to implement the $200,000 budget cut to maintain the AAA rating. The discussion with the rating agency person was not official, was not a part of the mayor or council meeting, was not subject to public input, and was in no way a guarantee from the source. Madison, by the way, got its AAA rating during the last year of my term, and it wasn't me or that council who got the AAA rating. It was a long history of mayors and council members working together over the years that made it happen. Second point, it turns out that the mayor and council do not need to reduce the budget by $200,000 as proposed. All that needs to be done, in my opinion, is to remove an unnecessary $300,000 expense that was added to the budget this year for the first time. Purpose of this $300,000 expense is to take the electricity used by the Madison buildings to pay for the electricity they use.
Time to wrap up that thought.
That can't be three minutes.
It is, yeah.
I timed it before...
There'll be another opportunity to speak after we do the introduction of ordinances for hearing, which you are on, so...
Let me make my...
I'm trying to keep things moving along. Thirty, can you do it in 30 seconds? Please, quiet.
I'll go.
Quiet, quiet.
Quiet, please. I'll go quickly, and I'll make the points quickly. $300,000 were put in the budget so that the borough departments can pay the electric utility for the electric usage. The usage is already metered and measured as it is. It simply doesn't have a price tag on it, and it is not in the budget. There's no need to have the dollars in the budget. You can manage electricity by looking at kilowatt-hours, as we always have. That's $300,000. That's expense that's not necessary. That takes care of it. The second item is other income. Other income, that is non-tax revenue. You and I don't pay taxes for it. That budget is in the proposed budget at $1.5 million lower than the last year's actual. I mean, that's a rather conservative number. A million and a half lower than last year's actuals, and if we can't find $200,000 out of the two proposals I make, we're not working hard enough.
Thank you. Good to go. Thank you.
My name is George Hayman, and I am from 6 Madison Avenue. And I see that my time is almost up. Fortunately, I have what I have to say written already, so... Having read with interest the council president's letter to the Madison Eagle, it was hard not to notice its almost robotic inability to take note of the human element involved. She lays out the actions of the cabal of the council to meet, quote, "vital budget goals" with all the compassion of double-entry bookkeeping, and utterly fails to address the most important fact, the one that most responsible for all of us being here tonight, that the actions of this heartless faction has invaded and disrupted the lives and livelihoods of real people with real feelings and by sudden ambush. People, by the way, who had done nothing to warrant it. The council president attempts to demonstrate, feebly, in my opinion, that it was all done by the book and according to procedure, but no amount of budgetary woes, or rice notices, or AAA bond ratings can ever justify the cruel reality of what this simple and simple-minded majority has done, not merely to a faithful public servant, but to us all. For that is where its emotional radioactive fallout has landed upon us all. By my calculation, this council faction has saved each resident of Madison $9.38. Oh, goodie. Forget that it has also made this town the laughing stock of northern New Jersey. I propose that we take our savings and purchase a dunking stool similar to the ones at the old Puritans in Massachusetts.
George.
Okay, but anyway, enough of that. It would provide us with some gruesome entertainment, for sure. Have you never heard the term "consent of the governed"? This action against Ray Cody that splattered all over Jim Burnett does not have the consent of the governed. I suggest that you backtrack quickly and undo what you have done, or else face a backlash well-deserved, I might add, because no budget-cutting necessity can ever justify the heartless method in your recent madness. I say do it now, tonight, or soon, or else you shall inherit the wind in the form of the scorn of the electorate.
Time.
And for that, it may already be too late. Can I just finish? But it's never too early to set your feet upon the path of redemption. Also, I would suggest that the time has come for a new borough attorney, as much as I've always been fond of Mr. Mazaka, because if these actions were indeed done by the book, then anyone who may have advised them so really doesn't need a good rest out in the pasture.
George, please.
And perhaps...
George, I'm going to cut you.
No, 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 I have one more paragraph. And perhaps the central majority on council...
George.
Should not just read job descriptions, but actually talk to the people who do the jobs. They will find that there are real people there and not just paragraphs and line items. Thank you.
Just as a reminder, please, remaining people in line, this is, as I started off, a very sensitive subject that has struck a chord in this town. We are very emotional. Be careful with your adjectives. Be careful with how you describe people's actions up here. You can make your points clear, with respect, without using the wrong words. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor. Hello, everybody. Don't start the clock yet. I want to say my name first because that usually takes a couple of seconds. Tom Harlan-Pudis, 27 Palmeroy Road. I just got 24 minutes of presentation by all these concerned people who came up here to speak, so thank you very much from everybody in the borough, I'm sure, just for coming and showing your passion for this situation and what's transpired. I was really hoping, when I came here tonight, that I would see some resolution rescinding the resolution as maybe, you know, a mistake, or I was hoping that we'd also have a presentation from the council showing some humility and saying that we had a misstep or a miscalculation in what we were anticipating that we would be saving by those three agenda items that were actually not on the agenda last time, those three resolutions that were presented at the previous meeting. I was hoping that you'd be able, for the last two weeks, to get together as a cohesive unit and figure out what transpired that evening, maybe what could be done differently, since you also, like you said, heard all the displeasure and shock from the public. Instead, we're here tonight, and I'm a little disappointed. Last time, I was, I think I was shocked and embarrassed about what transpired. That's what I said when I got to speak. Now, I'm disappointed and frustrated because I thought tonight we were going to actually hear what was the reasoning, besides budget, if there was something else, and what opportunity we might have to change your decisions. But now you've tabled that for another time. We also were hoping to hear something more from all the council. We heard something emotional. I know Ms. Tsukamoto spoke as generally as possible about what transpired and why it transpired, but I really think that we all deserve to hear what was the reasoning behind all that, with consideration of what everybody's saying. Why wasn't it discussed between all of you before? Why weren't Mr. Cody and Mr. Burnett given the opportunity to find the savings that you're so passionate about taking out of the budget? Instead, you had an agenda that didn't state what was going on, which I don't know if it's appropriate. From the meetings that I've been to usually, when something of that significance is going to be discussed, it's on the agenda so we could discuss it before you vote. But for some reason, that was hidden, or not hidden, I don't want to insinuate it was intentionally hidden, but from the public, it seemed like that was not put on there so that none of us could even get up to express to you why we thought it was inappropriate. So you've heard everybody speak, and there's a lot more people that want to speak, and I'm assuming they're going to come up here to say the same thing. Could you please change the decision that you made the last time? Could you please figure out a way for all of you to work as a cohesive unit and actually do the right thing for the town? I would like to make a suggestion. I don't know if I'm speaking out loud. One suggestion, Mayor, everybody got a little extra minute. And it took me a long time to say my name. I know you didn't. You started the clock before I said that. I don't know if this is, you know, something you guys have considered, but maybe the leadership on the council needs to be changed around a little bit. Perhaps we need to make a move with the president of the borough council and find somebody else who might be able to guide all of you. Not that Ms. Tsukamoto doesn't deserve to be on here. She was voted in by her constituents, but perhaps as the leader of the council, she is not prepared to bring you guys to a position where you do what's right and accepted by the majority of your residents.
Okay.
All right? Thank you.
I got to sign in. I'm Bill Cole, 117 Hempstead Court. And I'm not going to really articulate so much that has already been articulated about the outrage I felt after the 27th, but I needed to do something with that anger, and I needed to do something with that outrage. So the only thing that I thought to do was to organize and to try to organize, and that ended up exceeding my expectations because what ensued over the week after I just put some feelers out there to see if anyone else out there might be feeling the way I did, I got tons of responses. I have dozens of names of people I've never even met, who actually, to be quite honest with you, are prepared to do a recall. I want to stop short of that, though. I want to stop short of that because Councilwoman Tsukamoto, you made a comment tonight, and if you're to be taken at your word and you're listening to the people, hello, this is your opportunity. It's all your opportunities. You get a second chance, okay? And the thing that keeps going through my mind is there's this thing, the law of digging, and it would be wise for all in the majority to heed the law of digging, which is when you dig yourself into a hole, stop digging. Thank you.
I'm not going to speak to the unfortunate manner in which the council fired Ray Cody on February 27th. There's been substantial public discussion over the past two weeks of what I still believe to be a political act. Rather, I would like to address is why this was such a bad decision for Madison and why it was so unnecessary. For the past five years, Ray Cody has been an exemplary borough administrator, maybe the best we have ever had. Many of our leading citizens, Democrats, Republicans and independents, have stepped forward these past two weeks to praise Mr. Cody and his many contributions to the borough. We've heard additional discussion tonight. We have heard quotes from a number of persons regarding savings attributable to his leadership for as much as $1.4 million over the past couple of years. I cannot verify these savings, but what I can do is recall some of the initiatives that he has led on our behalf. The implementation of two important shared services programs, the shared municipal court with the Chatham and Harding, and the sharing of borough engineering resources with Chatham Borough. The preparation of open space grants, including the monies to purchase the 49 acres off of Ridgedale Avenue that made the MRC possible. Consolidation of staff positions. And with his legal background, Ray Cody has played a lead role in numerous internal and external negotiations for contracts with unionized borough employees, supporting our borough in arbitration proceedings for Madison Police salaries, the health service contracts with neighboring communities served by the Madison Board of House. I suggest that you do not want to give this all up in order to save a mere $100,000 in this year's budget. I say "mere" because we are speaking of about four-tenths of 1% of the total $25 million municipal budget. And if the monies for Mr. Cody's salary for the remainder of 2012 were to be raised by taxes, something like 0.75% of the budget that is funded by municipal tax levities. By my calculation, that would come to about $20 in the tax bill for the average Madison residents. in the tax bill for the average Madison residence, which is less than half the price of a tank of gasoline at today's prices. But the truth is, I believe there is no reason for a tax increase at all. As I understand it, the current budget includes $2.75 million in income from the operating surplus.
Wrap it up, Dave.
Now, I appreciate that that idea is to maintain our AAA bond rating. But historically, the chief surplus has run at about $3.6 million each year. So, even if the $2.75 million were to be increased by $100,000 to $2.85 million to pay for Mr. Cody's salary, we would still be returning something like $750,000 to the surplus at the end of the year. So, stability is still established, and Madison gets the benefit of having a first-class administrator and the additional savings and revenues his service would bring to the borough of Madison and to its fiscal health in no increase in taxes. Thank you.
Jane Reynolds, 119 Greenwood Avenue. We can see by the turnout here that many people are disappointed and upset by the firing of our town administrator as well as the manner in which it was done. We saw by the letters to the editor and the two strong editorials by the Madison Eagle that many people disagree with your decision. I personally fail to see that the saving of $100,000 this year on a $25 million budget warranted firing an employee. I ask you to examine the other parts of the budget, perhaps overtime pay, which seems to look excessive to me. I ask you to examine other parts of the budget. If there is no other way, I personally and the two other voters in my family would be happy to give up the $9.38 in order to keep an administrator who saved us far more money. I think that everybody is here today because we have always thought that Madison is a AAA town. We have also thought that we had a AAA council. We appear to be headed to have a AAA rating as far as bonds go. But our AAA rating as a town and as a council is falling. And I ask you to change what you have done so that we can restore our reputation and restore a wonderful business administrator. Thank you.
Larry Bruce, sorry, Laurel Way. Can I ask Mr. Burnett a question?
It depends what the question...
Mr. Burnett, unless you're a great actor, you were surprised from what I saw on TV. So, my question is, did any of the gang come to you before and ask you, A, do you feel capable of doing these two jobs by yourself? And B, are you happy to do them for approximately 35% of what the outlay was before?
I think we'll leave that as a comment and not as a question that should be answered.
So, you're not going to let them answer?
No, I think it's more appropriate as a comment. We, personnel issues and other things that...
But I want to know if they came to him. You're not going to answer?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Number two, many people have made eloquent arguments, Lisa Ellis in particular, Dave, about the budget savings. I'm going on record and saying, this has nothing to do with the budget. This has been... The first speaker, Mrs. Sarisson, I believe, used the term insult. This has been an insult from the beginning. And the biggest insult is your speech tonight because, come on, nobody's buying that. Thank you. I'm done.
Good evening. My name is Mary Ann McConnell, and I live at 142, a little nervous, Ridgedale Avenue. I'm new to town. But tonight, earlier on, I happened to be sitting next to a woman who told me she had lived in this town for 40 years, and this is the first time she felt compelled to attend a council meeting. I moved to Madison because I always knew of Madison. I loved it. I loved the look of the town. I heard that it was a very well-run town. I knew of some of the initiatives that Madison had taken. But after that meeting, where Councilwoman, Council President Sakamoto made the motion to remove Borough Administrator Ray Cody, I just had to say something. Councilwoman Sakamoto, and also Councilman, forgive me if I mispronounce your name, Catanello.
Catelino.
That's what I started with, but I heard somebody else pronounce it differently. I'll go back to my phonetic writing here. But they both stated that this was based on his, not on his performance, but rather as a cost-saving measure. I could not believe that. Would a corporate board fire its high-performing president to save money by eliminating their salary? It was also stated that there would be no problem with removing the administrator because the assistant administrator could easily take over Mr. Cody's responsibilities because they did the same work. It was therefore duplicative, and the positions could be consolidated, leaving Mr. Burnett as the administrator because his salary was lower. What an insult to both Mr. Burnett and Mr. Cody. And why did many, if not all, of the four council members, and somebody mentioned this before, vote to hire an assistant administrator, vote to rehire Mr. Cody this January if they believed that it was not necessary, that they were both doing the same job? Assistants are hired because the person who holds the position needs assistance in effectively carrying out their growing responsibilities. I cannot believe that what the four council members stated, particularly those who had the most to say, Council President Ms. Sakamoto and Councilman Catelino and the three, and the others, two others who voted with them, really honestly believed that they were, what they were saying. I just found it to be unbelief. In view of their actions, it appears that the four council members who voted to remove Mr. Cody may have believed that they were the most important people in Madison government. But they are not, really.
Yep.
Oh, just like that other guy.
Yeah, hold a second.
Tony, I'm sorry. I apologize. I'm going to jump in and take my three minutes. I do want to reply to Larry Bruce. That evening, I was served with a rice notice, as everyone else was. I did not know that my position was going to be terminated at the point in time, at the end of the executive session. I was notified of it. I did not know that I was going to be appointed to the business administrator. When it happened, I had extremely conflicted feelings. I obviously loved the town and put my heart and soul to the job. But I had a hard time reconciling the question of why the council decided to fire Ray Cody and to keep me because personally, I do think Ray is a better man for the job than me. I think that I've learned a lot under the two years, and I found it hard for me to reconcile the fact that he took me under his wing and he trained me for two years to do the job. And then, my very existence, my very existence, what he did for me, ended up causing this to happen. That was, that's the hardest part that I have to deal with this. I want to do what's right for the town, and I'm going to work as hard as I can at whatever position the council gives me. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Jim.
I'm Tony DeRosa, 9 Alexander Avenue. And I first would like to say thank you to Jim for those kind words and strong message that you've delivered. We needed to hear that, Jim. To the mayor and council, it was my pleasure to work for the borough of Madison for about 20 years. I served under four mayors, actually five, in one very short time, and two administrators, the second of which was Ray Cody. I have come before the council for personal reasons when things occur in the town. And I honestly can say that in my times of coming before council, I've always been faced with professional people who listen. And while I worked for the borough, I have always had tremendously professional people and great respect for them. But last, the last council meeting, in my opinion, left so much to be desired. It's not about the decision. Certainly, I don't agree with your decision. But it's the manner in which it was carried out, the reflection on our town. Madison has stepped back years, hundreds of years. We never, we never behaved this way, never. I'm a native Madisonian. I never saw this, not in any environment, not at the Board of Ed, not at the council level. And people not attending meetings, the reason why they don't attend is because they've entrusted their voice to you. They trust your decisions. They feel that you know the pulse of the town. Something went wrong. This is why there are misconceptions, and people are thinking the worst, the very worst. It's not good. It's not good for any of you. I don't want to preach, but I will close with a quote from a Supreme Court Justice, Potter Stewart, of the mid-1900s, kind of like this because I heard that you acted according to the letter of the law when you made your decision. You didn't do anything wrong. Well, this quote reads accordingly, "Ethics is knowing the difference between what you have the right to do and what is right," unquote. And if we exercise the law without ethics, I said we stepped back hundreds of years, we've probably gone back thousands of years. Actually, more than that. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Sandy Kolikowski, 136 Park Avenue. At the beginning of the last council meeting, I stood up and I said that I thought it was odd that at the previous council meeting, you asked town workers for their job descriptions during a budget process, that I thought it was counterproductive. Boy, was that an understatement. What I should have come right out and said was I don't want our governing body telling the very same people that have the responsibility of keeping us safe, providing our water, electric, and other essential services, of responding to our emergencies, that we're going to take a look at what you do because maybe we don't need you. I think it's a cowardly and destructive way to deal with people, and it's not the way I want our borough employees treated. It's clear now that what you did was unacceptable. But beyond that, to short-staff this town in the manner that you did was also irresponsible. The list of big projects and issues facing this town is daunting. There's the revaluation, the Green Village school redevelopment, the contract arbitration of the police, DPW, electric workers. There's the pump stations, the lousy roads, the possible downgrade of our bond rating, not to mention the unknown nature of the traffic impacts of Realogy BASF and the proposed development of the Honeywell property. Dismissing an experienced borough administrator at this juncture was breathtakingly irresponsible. I think you should undo the action taken and reinstate Mr. Cody to that position. And failing that, I think the four of you who voted to consolidate the positions should resign your council seats.
Since I'm the last speaker, I'll take time to sign in after I speak. I'm Judy Campbell. I live at 54 Sampson Avenue. I've been in Madison for 40 years. My children grew up here. My grandchildren are in the midst of growing up here. And I've also been on the Board of Trustees at Drew University for 12 years. I thought I'd be a little bit, bring a little bit of a different perspective to how horrified I was with the actions of the February 27th meeting. As a Drew trustee, for 12 years, I have tried to work very hard on bringing Drew University and Madison, the borough, closer together in lots of ways where the students can be more comfortable here, where the town can be more comfortable with the students. Drew has always had a good relationship with the mayors, Woody particularly, and always a great relationship with the police department. But the relationship between the borough administration and Drew has never really been terribly good. And I think everybody here knows that. It's not that it's been bad. It's just that it's been nearly nonexistent because there was never really people to call on to go have the conversations that a university like Drew would need to have strategic discussions. Ray Cody changed that completely. The relationship with Drew, for the first time in my 12 years at Drew, has been in a more strategic perspective than it has ever been. Sure, there's lots of ups and downs, and we weren't crazy about the electric bill. But there clearly has been a relationship. Can Jim Burnett do that personally? Of course he could. He's wonderful. But he won't have any time. And there won't be anybody else that has any time. And I think that's a real detriment to a town where I think Drew brings a lot to this town. And I think we take the chance with your actions for having made that much, much more difficult than it's ever been. So, for that, I'm very sorry. And I hope that you will take back what you've done and you will admit your mistake. And you will find a way to make this town go forward in the position it's always been going forward in. We can't afford to go backwards. We don't have time. We have a difficult economy. We have difficult things to do. And everyone here knows how hard your jobs are. You don't need to make them any harder. So, with that, I would say thank you for listening.
That's what happens when you think you're the last.
That's what happens.
I couldn't let you be the last.
Right.
John Wagner, 3 Ferndale. It really takes a lot of effort to get this eclectic group out here tonight. So, I told Carmella before the meeting, there's a lot of ghosts in the room. And the first council meeting I ever attended, and I don't remember what the special topic was. I think, Woody, you were a councilman, was at the Madison Junior School. It was some big topic. Something came up. We had to move it out of City Hall, out of Borough Hall, into a bigger forum. And a lot of people use words tonight like ashamed and embarrassed and upset. And you shouldn't be. None of us should be. It's forums like this that make Madison Madison. And we don't attend meetings, as somebody pointed out, because we trust our elected officials because you're just us. It's Madison. I'm not born and raised in Madison, but I'm a Madison chauvinist. Y'all know.
Y'all know, I don't even stop for gas in Chatham. I call a tow truck, they tow me. So, you know, we can feel bad, we can feel upset, we can feel ashamed, but it's nights like this, like that night in the junior school, I don't even remember what the topic was, but I said that night, I said, it doesn't happen in other towns like this. Council meetings are held, and there's a two or three gadflies in the person from the local paper, and that's it. But every once in a while, something happens, and we galvanize, and we come together like this. So, as the gentleman said before, stop digging, fill the hole, make it right, fix it. All right? It's that simple because it's a great town. It's always going to be a great town, and that's why we're all here tonight. Have a good night.
Seeing no one else wishing to speak, we'll move on to agenda discussions. Again, the Madison 2020 will be discussed on March 26. DPW gas pump and card reading station. Is David here or Jimmy want to cover this?
David's here.
David's here. While David's walking up, this was discussed during the budgeting process, and it is in the capital budget, and he will explain how we're almost at the time of the essence.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm here to appropriate money out of my capital improvement fund to put in a new gas system at the borough garage. Our system we have down there, as we discussed during capital, is over 20 years old, and it's to the point right now where I have to come and get the money now because the facility is falling apart. Literally, two weeks ago, I had to have guys out there turn the pump on because I had to spend $1,000 to get this thing running. So, this is why I'm here before everything is all approved and that to come start appropriating the money. And you see the paperwork I gave you, the system that we're going to be installing is a computerized system, can tell which each employee has their own PIN number, and each vehicle has their own key to a vehicle, and we can tell how much gas each vehicle in the borough is using. If anybody wants to know, that's how we're going to track gas for the whole borough and for billing too, for various entities that do, we supply, and we bill them on a quarterly basis.
I recommend that we pass this ordinance on the standpoint, we've been discussing budget more informed in the way for us to track. Oh, hello. It will give us opportunity to track where the act is going and to make sure that we bill accordingly. So, I'd recommend that we...
Any other questions or comments?
David, how long is this going to take to put this in? Because this is like a state of emergency.
No, the guy, Ralph from Petro Mechanics told me they can have it done in four days. That's what it'll take.
David, in the case of emergency, that's when we need to pump gasoline the most. Are we covered? Do we have generators that will enable us to do that during a storm?
Yes. That is, that facility there is hooked up to a big generator at Well A, which takes care of DPW garage and the whole light department too, takes care of them two big buildings, and that's all consistent right in with it, with the gas box, gas depot.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, this will be, money will be appropriated through ordinance at the next meeting, so I think you can, you got consensus that we're fine with proceeding and with the...
Okay, thank you.
Madison Artist Studio Tour. That's agenda rec from Jeannie.
Yep. Thank you, mayor. This is an agenda... Can you hear me? This one is an agenda recommendation for us to approve the Sixth Annual Madison Artist Studio Tour. The request is for MACA to have a community art piece to be displayed at Waverly Place. The recommendation is that, I believe they have already filled out the appropriate paperwork, and we have a copy of it. I guess the only question that we have is what type of artwork? Do we know that for sure? Because from the paperwork, we do not know at this point.
It's been done in previous years, I know.
Is it the same artwork? Because I cannot tell from this paper.
Is there anyone from... Okay, there. Deb Starker stepping up too.
Do I need to sign in?
Just state your name.
Okay, Deb Starker. I'm the president of the Madison Arts and Culture Alliance. Thank you. It would probably be a three-dimensional piece again, like last year, a sculpture, but it will just be contained in a very small area right by where the clock is, and it's going to be a community piece. We want to have kids be able to come up and actually, you know, help create something. So, it's not going to be any bigger than it was in any previous years.
So, there are no space issues? That's why, because that space is fairly limited.
Right. And then, you know, the tour will be throughout various businesses in town and studios in town, and there will be a reception afterwards.
Any other questions?
Sounds good. No?
So, it's under consent agenda resolutions.
So, my recommendation is for my fellow council members to support this effort.
I agree.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. It's the end of agenda discussion items. Ordinance for rehearing, none. This is invitation for discussion number two for the public. This is the opportunity to discuss anything not on the agenda or could be on the agenda also. Same rules apply, three minutes. Please state your name, address, and please show respect with your comments if anyone needs to be heard. Okay, people, okay, thank you.
I really was not going to say anything tonight. I think everyone...
Stick, stick.
Oh, yeah, I'm Frances Maanton. I live at 282 Woodland Road in Madison. I really was not going to say anything this evening. Everyone did a wonderful job and expressed the views of many. I have one question. You heard all of this. What is the next step? What can the public expect? And will it be just, you know, we have to know what's going to happen after all of these comments, and you might want to tell us what the next set of steps is going to be. I think it would be helpful.
So, we will be announcing a budget work session sometime between now and the, it can be no earlier than this Thursday because you need 48 hours' notice, and we want to get it in before the next council meeting so we can introduce the budget. The goal has been clear as far as council is to try to hold it at the, right now, what was going to be introduced tonight was a 2% tax increase, and that has certainly been consistent message is how to stick to that. But during this budget discussion, it's how to achieve that 2%.
Okay, that's good. Thanks a lot. Thank you, mayor.
Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting and move to introduction of ordinances.
The ordinance scheduled for first reading has a hearing date set for March 26, 2012, will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up ordinance 1-2002 for first reading and ask the borough clerk to read the said ordinances by title.
Okay. Ordinance 1, 2012, calendar year 2012, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriations limits and establish a cap bank.
I move ordinance 1-2012.
I second that.
Discussion. Seeing none, vote?
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
And the other two are not to be introduced. Consent agenda resolutions?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
I move consent agenda resolutions R-88, 90, 92, 94, 95, and 96-2012.
I second.
Discussion. Seeing none?
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Yes.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Any unfinished business? Approval of vouchers?
Okay. Public safety.
Sorry?
$12,182.70. Health and public assistance, $2,298.19. Public works and engineering, $238,781.53. Community affairs, $136.56. Finance and borough clerk, $92,399.88. Utilities, $156,308.78. Total is $502,107.64.
I move the vouchers for approval.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, no call.
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Yes.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Is there any new business? Seeing none?
Motion to adjourn.
I was waiting for somebody to second that.